Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. And looking forward to hear where we're going with this tonight. And looking forward to Jim joining us at some point. Mr. Doolan?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you. The first thing I'd like to do this evening is talk a little bit about the after-action report that the administrators and I put together based off of the latest incident we had with the city about no electricity. We all learned something. You can't educate students in the dark. First and foremost, though, my hats off to Casey and Beau, Eric and Trevor, and Mrs. Hunt because Doc Lynch was out of the area, Drew was out of the area, and they jumped in and took charge and they made things happen. So, we learned that you cannot prepare a hot lunch for students without electricity. As you know, that was the Domino's Pizza Day for the high school, so they didn't get Domino's Pizza that day. And as always, you know, students are our number-one priority. We learned that our administrative team and staff are able to react to the administrator, student, staff faced with an unexpected power outage and provide a safe environment for our students. We also learned that I can better communicate with the mayor, Imano Imano, although we did have calls going back and forth from the event on with different entities at my level to the city, talking to Mike Campbell, talking to different entities, Trevor, our custodian's brother, that's Mike, right? That's his brother. So, he called his brother and said, "Mike Campbell, what's going on?" As soon as I, as soon as I let you go now, and you'll remember your Friday updates, I gave you exactly what I did for the audience, I waited a few minutes, I thought it was just a blurt, you know? Then I ended up going to the high school because Drew called me and said, "Hey, we can't teach in the dark." I said, "All right, I'm headed to the high school." All phones were out, all computers were out, all things ran by electric were out. So, I go to the high school and I was met by Beau and Casey. I got Eric by me and I got Trevor by me and we immediately started planning. We immediately decided I have to send a message out to all the high school students. Unbeknownst to me, then my phone switched to Wi-Fi at the high school and well, if their electric's down, Mr. Hennessy, what happened to the Wi-Fi?
It's down.
It's down as well. So, knowing that, I called Jenny down here, sits back there, IC update person, and she got on her phone and came off of Wi-Fi and went ahead and sent the message out to the high school students. Once, I had Eric call May, he was talking to May left and right, figuring out buses. Once we got the message out that school was going to be done at noon, buses will be there, go home, come pick them up, we rolled with that. I went to the middle school, she kept them outside, then brought them in to get them lunch, took them back outside, brought them in and cleaned their, get whatever they needed for the end of the day, and we got them on the buses and went home. But prior to getting them on the buses, the electric came back on. All the time, I'm talking to Dave and I'm talking to Danielle on the phone about what's going on at their individual schools. Dave said, "We're not going to shut down because we can't send little kids home to dark houses by themselves." So, Dave's got many windows, as we know, at Park or Pioneer, and you've got windows there. High school has no windows. Then it came back on, as I just said, when we were at the middle school. So, I don't think we could have done anything different with what we knew at the time we knew it. I immediately got on the horn and tried to call Jim, unavailable. Got on the horn right after that, tried to call John, Jonathan LaRue was in the hospital, unavailable. Last but not least, I called the treasurer and I think I was talking so fast, she's like, "What are you talking about?" I said, "Well, I tried to call him and tried to call him and you're next, though." And then I shared the story with you. So, secondly, if I could, we found out that we need a bunch of new emergency lights. Those emergency lights in the high school are probably as old as when the high school was built. We've got to do a better job of testing our lights, practical maintenance, folks. Every month, the fire extinguishers get checked, so we're going to roll that into checking the lights as well, as soon as we get new lights. And that's on the horizon. Marcia's going to help us out with that because, as you know, in the wintertime, hours tend to go down for our lawns, folks. And her being a certified electrician, she's going to help us out with our lights. So, in closing, I believe that all Weezer, the board, us, businesses, the hospital, county offices, parents, everybody, anyone that receives their power in the city of Weezer was affected by the outage. I'm sure you guys were. So, we all learned that not to panic, but just to look at the situation, make decisions, go with them, and the very next opportunity you have, and which we did, we had an after-action report right here with all of my administrators and my maintenance supervisor. Should be to your questions.
The outage wasn't supposed to not come on until like 2:30?
Great point. They were telling us between 2:00 and 4:00 hours.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it was an understandable closure, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
A question from a mindset for our little team who said that Dave made a decision not to close down Pioneer. But I do know from conversations that we've had a litany of kids that were released from Pioneer School. Do we have a method for tracking who was released and if our systems or our computers were down, do we have a checkout system? What's the plan moving forward with our kids?
Well, as you know, any parent can check their student out any time of the day. We saw a lot of parents checking their students out at Park and Pioneer because you know how the rumor mill is. In fact, Dave had a conversation with a high school student about, "All schools are closing." "No, no, they're not." And he tried, you know, he told him, "All schools are closing." Dave said, "No, they're not." So, yeah, the secretaries, yes, Dave talked to all of the parents in the hallways when they were there to pick their students up. And then the secretaries had a checklist as they checked students out.
So, we have a list of students that's not electronic that allows, like, shows them, here's our parents from each particular student. There's a lot of them, check them out, we can go through and check them.
They all have backups, the secretaries all have backups.
And we use those backups to check our students out? 100%?
Secretaries. There was, they had class lists, and then if we checked out anybody to a sibling, they had the parent on the phone receiving an okay to do that.
Yep.
And then, how do we notify, like, so since our systems were down and our phone systems were down?
Yeah.
Our computers? Hold on. Let me look at my question. How? He distracted me.
Sorry.
How did we notify our teachers in those incidents that, you know, power went out? What are we doing with our teachers from this moment forward? Were they aware of, like, what's next on the agenda? How do we go forward from here?
Yep.
And if they weren't, what are we doing future tests to prepare for another situation if that were to happen again? Because forbid it does, but just in case.
What I did is got ahold of Mr. Doolan, basically told him, I said, "We have windows. We're fine." I said, "We are fine." And we were about, I don't know, half hour, 40 minutes from lunch, checked with the cafeteria. They said, "All of our food is hot, it's in the hot box. I know the power's off now, but that'll keep the food warm enough for our kids." So, what I did is I called Mr. Doolan. I said, "We're going to have lunch, but we're going to eat lunch outside between the second grade and third grade wing in the courtyard area there." I went around to every classroom and talked to the teachers individually, so I told them what was going on. I said, "We're going to just go with exactly what our schedule is." And we did that. We released by grade level, just like we always do. We ate out there in the courtyard. We had everything really was humming along pretty smoothly. I had to step out for a second and get water so I didn't start coughing. But the only time we even started to experience a little bit of confusion was when the high school and the middle school released and Pioneer School and Park School stayed in because I think there was just an assumption out there that all of the schools closed. And when the parents were coming up, I told them, I said, "We're staying in." I said, "We're going to stay in, guys. We'll be here until the regular time. We're going to run buses at the regular time." Actually had a handful of parents say, "Oh, you guys are going to stay open." I said, "Yes, we have windows, we can keep teaching, we can keep doing whatever we need to be doing." I had some parents say, "Oh, great." They turned around and walked away, they didn't check their kids out. And then shortly after that, the power did come on. I think we ended up, we checked out over 100 students, but we stayed open all day and did that. So, the way that we communicated initially was I went around and talked to each teacher. And then we had, when we were starting to get parents wanting to check kids out, we just used our radios in the building and we had a couple of them shadowing back and forth. We had our parents going to the third grade wing or the second grade wing and then grabbing those students and bringing them down. And Stacy did a nice job. She said, "If you've already asked for your child to be checked out, you guys will stay on this side of the foyer. Everybody else get in line on this side of the foyer." And then we just took them kind of one at a time and they went through their printed paper list to see what class the kids were in. And we just hustled around and checked the kids out. And Colin, our, Colin McComish, our school nurse, he was outside meeting parents as they came up to kind of explain to them what our expectation was.
Okay, so, on the original shutdown of power after you guys decided you were staying in house, you walked around specifically to all the teachers and said, "What we're doing?"
Yeah, we're going to go with the regular lunch schedule, we're going to do what we need to do, we'll eat outside in between and let the kids be out and do their thing. And then I said, "We'll get them back in and we're just going to keep going."
How many radios do you guys have at Pioneer?
I think we have three. We have one that works part of the time, but we have three. That was part of our debrief that we want to get a handful more. And then actually was able to, we have, I've got six more radios. They don't, they're just the ones that you can buy at like a sporting goods store. And we've got them all charged up, so we could actually go to those radios if we needed to, to just have one in each hallway. And again, we would have parents staged in those hallways and then I could be on it, the secretary could be on it, and we can do that too. So, but we just used those three radios and I kind of, I came from the office back down and got some kids, and I know Denise Lombard was doing the same, and that's kind of how we communicated, just went to the wings and grabbed the kids and brought them down.
You said when you were doing the after-hour briefing you mentioned, or after incident, possibly purchasing more handles. Are we talking about enough for every teacher, so every teacher has an idea of what's going on?
I don't think we needed one for every teacher. I think we would just want to definitely have one, enough, so that we could have one in the hand of a paraprofessional or somebody that's available, not supervising kids directly, to be in each hallway. And then we would definitely have a couple in the office. We could have had one more out front, you know, with Mr. McComish. So, we talked about it would be nice to probably have maybe three more radios at Pioneer. Then I think we would be really good and it would be super seamless. Again, it worked well. People just had to be patient. But we were able to communicate, we knew where the kids were, we knew who we needed to grab, and, I mean, as quickly as it happened, I felt like it was really pretty controlled. Yeah, we knew where kids were. We have two classrooms at Pioneer School that do not have windows, and the alert emergency lights did come on in those classes, they functioned just right, but they're really not designed to run a classroom. It's enough so that you can get out of the classroom safely. And we took those kids, had a couple of classrooms double up, so that we just had those kids in the room where there was windows. And it was really interesting, when I was going around to tell teachers that we were going to go ahead and just kind of stick with the plan and stick with the schedule, when I went down to the third grade wing, which it was another 25 minutes or 30 minutes for their lunch recess and lunch, every single classroom, they were just teaching, they were just, at the board, they were teaching. Because we have, they just opened their blinds and we were good to go. And that's, you know, again, you need to park in Pioneer because we have so many windows.
Our radios that we do have, are they able to communicate from school to school?
They can on the repeater channel. We have run into a few issues with some of the newer radios, I think communicating with the older radios, and that was a big part of our debrief that we talked about, that we want to make sure that we can have that flexibility. We were in communication with cell phones, but for some reason, and, you know, one of the things we need to look at, we talked about, is making sure that there's a battery backup on the repeater because if power's down, of course, if you don't have battery backup on that repeater, your radios aren't going to, you're not going to be able to communicate with my mother.
We've got to find another supplier, if you will, for our radios that they use on a daily basis.
Oh, yeah.
That I use once a year or twice a year when I talk to them, the parade, things of that nature. This could have been an event, but freaks drop all the time. Our radios are old, so we need to look into finding another provider, if you will.
Outside of the radio communication, we said that when the power goes down, the Wi-Fi goes down as well. Take in our telecommunications system is on Wi-Fi. Is there any possibility of having a backup system to the Wi-Fi just in case the system goes down?
So, one of the things, one of the things we're working at is, actually came about from a conversation with Casey Clark, is to allow telephony to continue is a soft phone, which is basically an IP app that goes on a cellphone. You can program it to desk phones. So, if a desk phone rings, it rings with your cellphone. It works outside of our internal telephony system. So, if the internal telephony system is affected, as long as we have cell towers up and running, we'd be able to act as if they were school telephones. For example, if my desk phone rings right now, my cellphone rings. If somebody dials my desk extension, my cellphone rings. I can go into that app and dial a telephone number and would broadcast through the Weezer School District telephony menu. So, it also masks my cell number. That would allow us to save community with parents, for example, without having to expose staff's private cellphone numbers. There is a UPS backup on the telephony system, on the telephony PBX. Currently, it only lasts about 80-odd minutes. Once that 80 minutes is up, it's completely shut down.
So, you talked about the cell tower going down. Now, Marcia couldn't use her cellphone at all when the outage went out, so that was an issue too, with her phone and probably some mothers as well. I haven't heard of any, but that's what was wrong.
I guess last follow-up question, my question is, do we have another meeting scheduled for follow-up, like another follow-up, or do we even need another follow-up? Or are we good to go and if you guys figure all the bugs out, we're going to go on?
Well, this only happens once every 16 years, so we'll be gone by the time it happens again, as I've been told. But, no, great question, Mr. Flaroo. Radios, better communication, definitely our light, our emergency lights, working with Kevin to see if we can get that, what he just talked about, it's about my pay grade, but if we can get what he's talking about. But again, I go back to, we did the best we could with what we had. And I echo again about the people that stepped up that weren't even in charge. We did an outstanding job. So, we did the best we could with what we had.
But I don't want to, if you've answered this question, just tell me, we don't need to go any more details. Do we have analog phones in our schools?
Not anymore. Okay. Right? Because they're old.
But it's possible. It is, so we can keep talking about that because we, yes. Anyway, I just wanted to...
Great question, but, yeah. When you go to fully net, the cloud, you know?
Yeah, I'm good, that was...
Okay, yes, sir. Right, okay. We finish with this topic?
Good.
Okay. So, as we continue to talk about standards, essential, targeted, homeschool, private school, charter school, voucher system, we have decided that we've got to be, and I ask for your help too, because it's going to affect you if it affects us. I would ask for your help. We've got to be the biggest advocates for the Weezer School District of public education in our area. So, what we've done, I put together six bullets based off their guidance of why would you want your kid or kids enrolled in the Weezer School District? Now, you can hack these up, you can give me your own, you can circle what you like, don't like. But in about a week's timeframe, I'm going to take these bullets, and if you have any feedback, I'm going to roll these bullets into a business card for everyone of my admin, their name on the front with their job title, and on the back will be these bullets. Because what we've got to do, we've got to establish a two-to-three-minute, I call it elevator speech. If you're walking down the street and you find somebody, their kid doesn't go to our school district, and you start up a conversation, and they ask you, "Jeff Church, why would I send my daughter to your school district?" "Oh, well, hey, Jeff Church, I'm a lead teacher, is this why?" Or, "This is why." So, you guys can look at that if you like, take it with you. But I'd like to revisit that, if you could, let me know in about a week, because I'd like to get those, I'd like to get those business card order for our administrators. Questions on this, ladies and gentlemen? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they did a great job, as well as Kyle, Riley, Ms. Barra, some input. Food, yeah, all the directors gave me some input. All right, as we continue to, we call it going back to the basics, in reference to, again, targeted, essential targets, standards, and please, after the meeting, and I invite the audience too, look at that board to my right. That's last year's ISTAT scores. So, every Monday, every Tuesday, we have that council, we discuss that board and we discuss a better way ahead and how we're going to get those numbers up. So, what we did, I took nine questions or nine statements, now we looked at these. We looked at a clear and shared focus, we looked at high standards and expectations for all students, we looked at effective school leadership, we looked at high levels of collaboration and communication, and you guys can read number five. So, I did it first with my administrators. On a scale of one to 10, they said that we have a decent, pretty good, clear, and shared focus. Because if I'm to ask any one of my administrators right now, what's our number-one goal, Mr. Davies?
Increase student achievement.
Increase student academic achievement. Or for me, I'm kind of slow upstairs, to raise student test scores. We all know that, so that's why they got an eight. Number two, high standards, expectations for all students, we need some work here. That's why all students is capitalized. We've got to think more and do a better job reaching all students in the Weezer School District. Effective school leadership, I would hope they'd give themselves a nine or a 10 because there are the administrators in the building, but a nine, we'll live with the nine, we'll live with the nine. But the director said it's an eight, so that's pretty good, one point apiece. Effective school leadership, eight and a nine. High levels of collaboration and communication, this is exactly what I, I thought it'd be a little lower, and I'll tell you why. It's not that our staff doesn't talk, it's not that our administrators don't talk to our staff, it's trying to find the time to make that happen. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Bush, we talked about this a little bit, we have no time for PLCs, professional learning communities. We give what we get on those Fridays, and that's all we got. So, I'm putting together a plan, and I'll visit with you about that, on how we can get some more time reserved for like-minded academics at all levels to talk together once a week, at least an hour. Because data says that if you spend an hour talking about PLCs, talking about data, there's your result right here, it should raise these scores right here. So, number five, curriculum instruction assessment aligned with standards. Again, not bad, but we need to do better. It all starts out with PLCs. It all starts out, we find that dedicated time to allot for staff to be able to talk about standards, to be able to talk about summative, formative, and things of that nature to get our test scores up and continue with our number-one goal. So, six to nine, frequent monitoring and learning, of learning and teaching, we do pretty good there. Admin says half-half, we could do a lot better, they say. Again, this is the time, the time, they like to have more time. Focused professional development, the director say eight, admin say five. I would say this is probably an eight. I would push this up a little bit because of the focused PGE we've done thus far. Last Friday, you saw my Friday update, all district withdrew seclusion and restricted training. You saw we kicked off the school year with the guest speaker I brought in, followed by RTI training from Solutions Tree. So, we are targeting where we want to go. And if you sit back and look at the whole process, it's both students starting to work together like we wanted to. Supporting learning environments, if we're not doing this, we probably should find a new job. That's why those are high. Now, the bottom one, we all need to work on. We've got to do a better job than we have, and that's why Mrs. Haverston, I don't want to put her on the spot, but that's why Mrs. Haverston's late, because she just had our first-of-the-year parent meeting with our special education parents, then at Pioneer. So, we are trying to increase family and community involvement. So, submit your questions.
Are these numbers like the average of what they all submitted, or did they all come together?
We all did it in here and just, it was by raise a hand and just, yeah. Just to try to set the foundation to where we need to go from, yes, ma'am. Great question. The administrators, anything to add on that?
How do we make more time for them?
Well, like I said, I'll put together, I'm going to put together a team and we're going to come see you, but like data says, it's got to be an hour, it should be an hour a week. So, you've heard of a late start, you've heard of an early release, you've heard of something along those lines. That means the kids come to school later during the day, or they get out earlier on the day. Not saying it's got to be like that, but we've got to do something. If we want to put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, and do what we know has been done and has been successful, and we're on our way, we're on our way, we've got to take that next step. And that's the next step. Okay, another good point, if I could, we are off and running, you said my Friday updates, we're off and running on our book, our book...
Energy study.
The energy buzz for my administrators and Out Learning the Wolves with my front-office staff and my directors. What does it talk about? It talks about leadership, it talks about fun suckers, it talks about people that are doomed, doomed, doomed. I mean, it's a great, and if you've never been to a book study before, it does more than just, you just read the book and talk about it. It really brings out people's talk, the way they talk, it brings out, you know, some feelings and stuff, so it's a great opportunity. We're off and running on both of those books. I hate in and on this, but you guys also saw what I sent you on the Friday update about the track. It's getting colder, they need 55 degrees or 50 degrees and higher to put the stuff down. And here's what the contractor tells me, evacuation and grading took longer than anticipated. Additional excavation was required to repair soft spots. Excuse me. And he says he believes that there were two days of rain delay, and I know there was. So, we just, like Mr. Clark said, we want to do it right, we'd all agree on that. So, I think on Wednesday, they're going to start laying down asphalt, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, but they still can't lay down, as Mrs. Thatcher would say, the squishy stuff until it gets hot, warm.
That's efficient.
So, question, follow-up on that track, then. We're not getting until next April, which that date would be halfway through the track season. What is our plans for, number one, the track athletes, what are we going to do with them to begin the season? And number two, the two or three track meets that we typically have at the high school?
That's a great question, Flaroo. Once the asphalt gets down, they can practice on the track. And let's hope that Dr. Croft will be nice enough, let us use his track again.
So, we'll be using the track?
To practice.
With our shoes, not our spikes on asphalt? And then, and then for the track meets, are we planning on doing what we...
Yeah, unfortunately, our, our plan is gonna be to utilize payout, hopefully, um, again. Um, and that might be some, some times where we're gonna have to travel to practice to get those kids some, some practice on the, on the surface, so.
Not, not unexpected. I think when we all started that process and where we were at with the starting, we were like, the odds of getting it finished before the winter were, it was a, it was a hopeful pipe dream. I'm glad we started it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have tonight, submit your questions. Thank you. Yes, sir. Any more questions? Okay, Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Bush. Mrs. Hunts, Mrs. Hunts here, I think you saw what she, she provided you. Unless you have any questions for, she's not gonna speak unless she wanted to speak about what she gave you. You want more, you want less, you want something different? That's very limited right now, because you only had one, if even one testing, testing cycle for, for the students, so.
We're talking about the assessment completions, right?
Yes, sir. The data, yes, sir.
Can you just fill me in on what the difference is between the 2023, 2024 ISTAT, like, why we aren't able to compare and contrast, what did they change?
Um, so it's not the ISTAT, it's the IRI, so it's just the K3 students that it affects. Um, the company that does the test, the IStation, changed the, like, scoring percentile ranks nationwide. Um, so, if you go back, and I have a whole presentation on it, if you guys really want to see it, but, um, if you go back historically, like, our IRI scores, K3, were always in the 80 to 90% proficiency. And that was a totally different test, so about 2018, they completely changed the test. And then '22, they changed the scoring of that new test. So really, the last two years worth of data are all that we can compare if you're looking apples to apples.
Well, we do have IStation for one more year, uh, then they're gonna go, well, they're actively looking at my new platform. But IStation will be with us for, for this, for this, this year.
I think probably the biggest thing with the scoring that they changed was, um, an eighth grader that scores 344 points is at the same reading level as a first grader who scores 344 points. Before that, it was different, right, grade level, um, now it's comparable, K8.
If I could add, Mr. Dylan, it helps you determine some grade equivalencies, so when you're looking at students who are accelerating, it gives you some grade equivalencies to look at, because that's not a specific part of the report for ISIP or IStation, and same thing for our kids who struggle, it gives us some grade equivalencies to kind of look at. So we can start figuring out as teachers in our, in our classrooms, where might I need to adjust my instructions to, to mirror some of those grade equivalencies for kids. Um, that was a piece of data we received when, um, we did the STAR test. Um, and so that's kind of why that, that norming was done. It's pretty typical for assessment platforms to change their norms about every five years, so it's about where we are.
Does that account for this note on here about the eighth grade scores, or what is that?
No, do you want to ask, I can speak to that, sure. So part of, um, our goal within our special education department is to ensure that our kids are making annual growth. And the one measure that we have to use right now is IStation. Um, and so, we have, um, access with Pioneer Park in the middle school. So our high school students that were monitoring their progress are included in the middle school group. So Mrs. Hunt had to adjust that data. Um, I can now go do some adjustments in IStation, which I think will help pull those kiddos out of the eighth grade data, and so she won't have to make that adjustment moving forward. So we're gonna try some things, but that's really our progress monitoring tool for their progress towards their IEP goals and how they're doing with that.
Mr. Dickerson, do you think we want to add more than your written report?
Oh, I, sure. Um, so just, I just wanted to add a highlight, um, right now, that, uh, it's kind of a, a high point for us, I guess, but we have 391 students that have 98% attendance or better. Um, 141 of those students have perfect attendance, haven't missed a single class period. Um, that's pretty neat, and then, um, we only have seven, um, students, um, and these are not exact numbers, it's just a, a ballpark, but we have around seven students that have 70% attendance, and right now, that's been five absences, um, or more. So, that's kind of a highlight for us, is that we got a lot of kids coming to school on a daily basis. Um, pretty neat that 141 students have not missed a single period, right? So that's pretty neat. Um, now, in that 391, um, you do have students that have missed periods, but it hasn't added up to seven periods, which would be considered our, uh, considered a day. So, um, we have students that have missed those periods, and they're managing our system, right, of how you get around our rules to not miss those days, which is kind of tricky, but, um, we appreciate that. Um, and so, with that, we have a lot of good things going on at the high school. I wanted to, uh, bring some guests to help, uh, share some, some good things that are happening. So I actually invited our band drum majors, uh, to come and speak with you tonight, if that's okay.
Hi, good evening, guys, thanks for having us today. Thank you, Mr. Dickerson, and thank you guys all for giving us some time to speak about the good things that are going on with the Weezer High School Band. Um, I'm drum major, I'm the senior drum major here at Valdivia.
And I'm a junior drum major, Grant Walker.
So we're just gonna talk about some of the really good things that are going on with the, the school, with the Weezer Band that's going on. So, I'll just start off with a little, like, backstory of how, how I started. So, since the start of middle school, sixth grade, where every student starts, uh, you have the option to, uh, choose band. And I, I decided to have taken that because my family, all my family, I have two older cousins, older brother and older cousin, that all took the choice of doing band, and so I decided to partake in that legacy, because we all played saxons, so it was all a little fun thing to do. So, we did a lot of that going up, and I decided to continue with it all the way to my senior year, and it has been one of the best decisions I've made in a while, in, it's not a while, but one of the best decisions I've made, you know, growing up, it's helped me develop a lot of good things. So, you go on through middle school learning, the basics of the horn, and before you know it, you're ripping cool stuff out of your horn, you know, it's really cool, the big change, you see in a year to two years, three years, four years, it goes on. And so, as soon as I got into high school, we learned the big thing, marching band. Playing on the move, kind of out of breath, it's a lot of fun. So, so the marching band has been successful now, up to my, all the way up to my freshman years, when our big success started, our dynasty essentially of success. We won our, my first year, freshman year, my sophomore year, and last year. So we've been successful all three years at the D3 competition at Boise State. And that, that freshman year was our first competition since the pandemic, because the year before had gotten canceled. My freshman year was the first year it was back, back on track, doing everything, doing everything right. And right now, we're on track to win our fourth funeral, which means I haven't lost a D3. So, that's been fun, and not just the marching band, it is an elite part of the school. It is the jazz band, we always show these big schools like Timberline, Capitol, what's up, like, Weezer can shred, we can, we're the, we're the big, we're the little, we're the little cats that can, you know? We play, we play pretty dang good. Our concert band also shows some pretty, pretty cool stuff, we play a lot of, a lot of nice symphonies, I guess, we could call it. Um, yeah, it's, it's just really cool stuff that our band has been up to, you know, we're always successful every year. And that is my part, thank you, guys.
Uh, yeah, so, thank you, you here for sharing that, and, um, so me personally, I've always loved band, and, uh, I, I started in, uh, fifth grade in Boise, but, like, oh, yeah, I went through that, and, uh, I moved to Weezer in eighth grade, and right when I got to the, the band program, it was just amazing, I really liked it here. And yeah, as, uh, as soon as I got into high school, marching band, you know, it's, uh, playing on the move, stuff like that. Um, and then, we ended up, uh, first D3 competition my freshman year, we ended up, uh, not just winning, uh, our division D3, we won all the captions, like, we swept everything. So it was like, this marching band is amazing, I, I love it here. And yeah, our band's amazing, and, uh, I didn't start, uh, jazz band until my sophomore year, but right when I got in, I also love jazz band as well. They're such a good group, we always play so well at the, the festivals that we go to every year. And, uh, yeah, and, uh, a fun part of jazz band, you also get to participate in pep band, go to basketball games, play loud, have, have a lot of fun. So, uh, and yeah. Uh, another, another part of band we have is our percussion section as well, our percussion ensemble. And they always perform well with our concert band, and, uh, we always, uh, give the judges, uh, a nice, uh, elite performance every time we go to festival every year. And, uh, I really see our, uh, band doing well in the next few years. I mean, like, we've won the last four D3s since, like, eighth freshman year. And yeah, we're, we're doing, we're doing really good right now. And yeah, that's, that's about it, I have, that's about all I have right now. Any questions?
Can you tell them when your next competitions are, so they, they can come? Aren't they coming up this, don't you have quite a few on Saturdays?
We have, we've got a competition every Saturday of this month, and the last Saturday of this month is gonna be our final one. This is, this, yeah, this is the, yeah, it's the one that matters a lot, we're on that blue turf, you know, hoping to dominate everything once again. Um, but, our competition this week is gonna be Saturday at Valley View at 11, I believe is when we perform.
No, we perform at 2.
But, we perform at 2, um, we hope to do pretty well, as per usual, we usually do pretty well.
Congratulations on your success.
Can you say you play the saxophone?
Yeah, all my, all my family, yeah, he does do. Pretty superior to everything else.
Do you have a, do you have a plan to continue that into college?
Um, I have thought about it, I think I already, I'm debating within, like, U of I and BSU to go. BSU's definitely bigger with music, because they got that Blue Thunder marching band, which is cool, I'd have to audition for that. I'm also thinking U of I, because they have a pretty cool jazz program, and that's kind of what I'm more interested in, so I'll definitely figure that out.
For me, for me, yeah, I like, I like concert band a lot, um, and, uh, I, my, my main instrument is a clarinet. I do play tenor saxophone with the jazz band, pep band, and stuff like that. But, I was thinking, I was probably definitely gonna go into college for, like, clarinet or something like that. After, after, like, after graduating high school, to serve a mission for my church, and then, yeah, go to college and play clarinets and stuff like that.
Do they sound good to you?
Thank you.
So yeah, just the, the jazz band, or the band program at the high school is, is one of the elite programs in the state. They are, they are phenomenal, we're proud to have them at the high school. Um, they have a, a tremendous amount of student athletes, uh, they get out there and are, are participating, um, in band and and doing great things, and they, they go out and practice every Friday right now. And for quite a while, I see them out there in the morning practicing. Um, it's, it's a dedication that, you know, um, they put the effort in and get rewarded for itself, we appreciate them very much. Are there any questions, uh, for me? Of the high school?
Questions, thanks, thank you for bringing those, uh, students in, we, we love hearing from our students.
Absolutely.
Love to, to be able to highlight them and, and show them off to our community, because, because they're great, great kids.
So I do have a question. So, do we ever send all of the other athletes, because these guys play at every basketball game, every football game, do we ever send any of the other athletes to watch them in the competition?
So we actually have, uh, well, it's kind of funny, there, there are a lot of the same kids.
Right.
So, um, but we, we do, we don't send buses usually to go watch them, but we have a large following that go and support them, um, that go on their own individually, but yeah, if somebody wanted to get a, a bus together and go support them.
And I think that
We've seen that happen in other schools, that's kind of cool. The worst part about it is, is that it, there's, it's all packed into the same days, all week long. And so it makes it, it makes it tougher. It makes it tough when we send, um, pep buses to other events, because most of our kids are competing somewhere.
Mr. Clark, anything additional from your written report?
Um, well, one thing I will add is that, um, the band concert is at 7:00 PM on, um, October 29th. So that includes the middle school and the high school, and that is at the high school. And the choir concert did a great job, if you were there, um, it was a Halloween theme, and they did an amazing job, and so I'm looking forward to seeing the band. Um, we, we did a lockdown drill today, and, um, and included an evacuation piece to that, and then they, the buses came and loaded and and did their regular evacuating from the bus as part of it. So, the lockdown, um, students just, and teachers take it seriously, it was, um, they were out of sight, lights were out, and they were out of sight, and they took it very seriously, and then we, um, we, we sounded the alarm in the passing period, at the end of the passing period, so that students get in, in the practice of going to the nearest classroom. It's near the end of the classroom, so most of them were in their classrooms. Um, that way we can kind of work, work out any, any details that weren't there. Um, and then the message to them after the drill was that they went to their class if they weren't already in there, and that in an, in a, in an, in a real emergency, they would have to be evacuated and, and, and released, and so that we were gonna just practice that, so it wouldn't be mass, okay, you can leave now, we would, and so we did the sixth, sixth grade, we did the seventh grade, and then we did the eighth grade. No real issues and little minor things, and they were taken care of, so the system was good. And then, perfect attendance, we recognized our perfect attendance today, we gave them, we did a drawing. We had 75 students with perfect attendance, and, um, we did a drawing, and each homeroom had one student that was drawn out of their homeroom to receive a personal pan pizza from Idaho Pizza, so.
Mr. Bush, if I could.
Please.
Thank you. Uh, I was there, Cody was there, and if I was an active shooter in the sixth grade wing, I would have left the sixth grade wing because I didn't hear nothing. I tried to hit, I tried to break some doors down, nobody came to the door. So I would have walked, I would have left sixth grade wing if I'd ever, if I was able to get in the school. Number two, it's a great, it's a great opportunity whenever we can do inter, interactivity training. Now, this is the first time I've ever seen this before, uh, where, where lockdown turns into an evacuation drill that, uh, that, that meets MACE annual requirement. But what it does, it lays the foundation for our drill coming up in the spring. Remember last year, we talked about it, going through the full, the full kit caboodle, uh, where parents come pick their kids up somewhere, some location, to, to, to emulate a real lockdown thing. So this is the first step, and trying to see how that might play out, so they did a great job, the bus folks did a great job, too.
Good evening, everyone, um, just a brief, uh, addition to the, the board report for Indian Head. Um, we have a planned trip that, uh, we're, we're planning to go down to TVCC on November 6th to the CTE open house, the Career Technical Ed Program down there, and, uh, hopefully show our students, uh, what they have to offer in terms of Botech programs, so. So that was an addition to our, that's it. Any, any other questions for me?
Slightly disappointed that your graduate didn't want to have a graduation.
Yeah, we were too, we were kind of looking forward to cake, and he wasn't, he wasn't into it, so. Hopefully we'll have one more at the end of this session, we got one that's really close.
Michael.
I'm happy to answer any questions based upon the board report that you have in front of you.
I think that your idea that you posted in there is a good idea. Even if others think it's cheesy, I think it's great. And I know Jim is just jealous right now because that was not your response.
Oncoming aside, how did you come up with that idea?
It's just, I'm a huge foodie. And I just wanted to do something a little outside of the box or something engaging. So it could be a complete dud. Just ask me this in, in May and we'll see what that looks like.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, guys. Of course, you guys know parent teacher conferences this week. That is a huge thing at Pioneer School. We'll, we'll see ninety-five to a hundred percent of our parents write in there. So this is a, this is a huge, again, community event for our, to get our parents into the school and have an opportunity to visit with the teachers. And I know it's, it's a lot of work for our teachers, but they do a great job and schedule those conferences. So we're really looking forward to that. Wanted to point out on my newsletter, there was a new little section at the bottom. It's called, Did You Know? I think it, Did You Know? Or something like that's what I call it. But great idea from our, from the staff. We were visiting at one of our meetings, at one of our leadership meetings. And just little snippets of stuff that happens at Pioneer School all the time that so many people don't know about. And I've, what I've done is I've asked them to send me those little snippets so I can include them in my parent newsletters. But then I can also include them in the board reports. And just so you guys know, one of them was, one of the second grade classrooms, or actually, excuse me, the second grade classes got together. And for grandparents day, put together a bunch of neat cards and got some little boxes of candy from Patrick down at Weezer Classic Candy. And went around to the, to the care centers in town and distributed a bunch of stuff just to say thank you to, to some of our senior citizens in Weezer, which is a great effort. And we got some good feedback, had one gentleman that made a point to drive to Pioneer and just said, that was just, it just made my day. What a neat thing. And then the other one I put in this month is, so if you guys haven't been in Pioneer, some of you have. In the, the little kind of breezeway between the second and third grade wing, there's a bunch of big windows there. And the second grade teachers have been putting together a giant American flag where kids all build little pieces of the flag and it's part of our Constitution Day celebration. And it's really, really neat. So those are just a couple this year, or excuse me, this month to get us started on that. But hopefully it'll be a lot of fun, little information that comes your way, just talk about all the great things outside of all of the academic stuff that we're doing on a daily basis at Pioneer. Would like you guys just to maybe put on your calendar that Tuesday, November twelfth, is our Thanksgiving lunch. Last year, Rachel, when we feed about nine hundred?
Yep.
Something like that, honestly, fed about nine hundred people that day. So we might as well have five more, okay? So if you guys want to come down and join us, that is, that's another great community event. We have some guest servers come in and help us out in the cafeteria. But that's a big day for us. We will also invite all of our retired teachers to that lunch on that day. So it's a big event, a lot of fun. So if you guys can make it, let me have you there. Mrs. Clark brought up the bus evacuation. May and I worked on this. It's been probably a few weeks ago now, three weeks, something like that.
Seventeenth of September.
So early in September, almost a month now. But we did a bus evacuation drill. And we had all of our students at Pioneer School, kindergarten through third, come out, visit with the bus drivers, get on the buses and talk about how to safely get off the bus in an emergency. And even though a lot of our kids don't ride the bus, there's a great probability they might get on a bus for a field trip or for something like that. So appreciated that, working with May and got that taken care of. So definitely was an, an important one for us. And then my last thing is, we're working with my staff last, last spring. We wanted to talk about bringing back a little bit of homework, bringing back our nightly reading for twenty minutes, ten to fifteen minutes of math homework. And what we want to do is we want to recognize our kids and our families for working so hard to get that done. And the teachers have been keeping track. I don't have the numbers because I was just starting to collect the data today. But we're going to recognize our kids each quarter. This quarter, students who turn in eighty percent of their math and reading homework. Then we're going to ratchet it up to eighty-five percent for the second quarter, ninety percent for the third quarter, and ninety-five for the fourth quarter. And, but we're going to do something for those kids and just say, hey, you know, great job. You're investing in your own education. We know you're getting support from home and we want to recognize those kids for their positive efforts. So I'll keep you guys posted on that each quarter.
Thanks. What time is our Thanksgiving lunch?
It will start about eleven and go to about three. No, I don't know. It's a huge chunk of our day, but I believe the first meal will be served and it'll be kindergarten and it'll start at ten fifty. So.
As a, as a big PBS nerd, I love the Did You Know? series. And then I had a chance to catch some of your third graders walking around town.
Wasn't that neat?
With the, the history of the town. I love that the middle, the elementary school does that.
And that's a very traditional field trip. It's been happening for a long, long time. And they tweaked it this year and actually had some guest speakers along the way that actually were able to give more history of Weezer. It was, that's a huge effort. And again, a lot of parents joined the classes and walked around. So really, really neat field trip for those kids.
By the time I got done with that day, my hand was red from all the high fives of kids. Their graders, they know how to give high fives.
Yes, they do.
It was good to see them.
Those are some good field trips, it looks like, but they.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of great field trips. You guys saw that in the report, so a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Mrs. Howard, anything additional from your report?
Yeah, the only thing that I would add to, was just coming from the first official sped PAC meeting. PAC being Parent Advisory Council. I stole that from our migrant federal programs. Because that's what good educators do, we steal from other people. You know, I was really excited. We ended up having eleven parents show up this evening. And given the time being kind of a four forty-five start for our first meeting, it's, it's not maybe the most parent friendly time because it didn't necessarily allow everybody to get off work. But parents just kept coming in, so we had eleven total. Great conversation about what can we talk about at parent teacher conferences? It doesn't have to just be about a report card, but we can talk about with our students with disabilities, you know, how are they socializing with their peers? Are they interacting in cooperative learning opportunities? Because sometimes for some of our kids, that's the primary focus of their time in the classroom. And so I think parents just wanted to know it's okay, that they can ask those questions. And of course, we have more to talk about, but they generated a list of topics that they are interested in learning more about. And we decided that we would meet quarterly. But our primary focus over the course of this year is going to be, how do we help support our students in transitioning? Our special education students specifically, how do we help them transition from building to building to building in our district so that it's not a reinventing the wheel when they go to a new school? And also building some familiar, familiarization for the parents of that new building. And then how do we grow from school year to school year, even though they stay within a building? Because kids change a lot over the summer or they might change a lot from one annual IEP to the next. So I'm excited about the work that's in front of us and I think it was a fantastic parent group and very thankful for them showing up. So it's a good event.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Monday Rogers to take two minutes and share something with you. No, sir. Share something with you that's going on, that's going on, and there we go. Mrs. Thatcher, I know you love to speak.
Yes, I do, I have every time. Okay, so every Thursday, we do Domino's and smoothies at either the high school or the middle school. We have new menu items, mostly, well, we've been doing it at all the buildings, but mostly at the high school and the middle school to try to increase participation. We did a teriyaki chicken and rice bowl. And Wendy and Elma are fantastic because they add a little extra. But they added some veggies with it. And she said that she had done ninety servings and they ran out. I mean, and they always have more than one item, but the kids loved it. Let's see. We've tried barbecue rib hoagie, some chicken tacos, a chicken fiestables coming. And then we want to try like a baked potato and chili bar. We've been adding more scratch cooked meals to the menu. And then the Thanksgiving lunches are coming. November twelfth is the Pioneer and the high school. And then middle school's the thirteenth, park school's the fourteenth. And then we wanted to see about maybe getting a barbecue grill for all the barbecues everybody wants to have. And then the only thing that we noticed like with the power outage was if it's going to be extended, maybe see about getting a generator for the, at least one of the freezers so that we could move product if we had to.
Well, these guys took care of part of mine, so. I still need to schedule with park school and high school to get, to get all the rest of the students to go through an emergency evacuation. We're still on the same schedule for the new buses coming in. Hopefully, the activity bus will be here in November. The second one will be March, April. And then we, the third one will be in November of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Eric? A group of guys, and, you know, tall guys, that I have working for me. One of the things that we started out school years, I kind of challenged them to come up with better ideas of their daily routine, cleaning, what would make it easier for them. And they came up with some stuff that we have shared with the other custodians. And to make it easier, guys are all team working together. It's been great. Trying to keep our buildings as clean as possible, maintaining stuff we run into. We're trying to make it better than just keep it the same if it does have to be replaced. Other than that, working with the admins has been great. Mr. Doolan's got them trained well. No, it's been great working with these guys at each school. And.
Is that a bottom-up training or a top-down training?
Yeah, the one, it's a little bit of both.
Thanks, Eric. Morrison?
So a couple of things, I, with the help of Kyle, received a grant from Laura, Laura Project or Laura Foundation to do a park school project to put a fence in the back for safety. It was installed last Friday. Cut out all the old go posts that have probably been there since your grandparents were children. Got a brand new set of seven by twenty-one, I believe, right? Yeah, which is legal size. I did receive those. I'm not going to put them up till spring because winter's coming. And the baseball field has been dug out, but the sand will be here this next weekend to complete that project. Oh, and Fred will be painting basketball court keys and four squares in the spring as well. The other project that my, me and my group have been doing is inside of my building over here, if you guys don't know. There is a sixteen by twelve building that's been there for, May said, over twenty-five years, full of drama club clothing. I do not have a heated building. And so I didn't have anywhere, place, any warm place to do work in the winter. So I asked last fall, actually it was a year ago, if I could clean that building out, do something with it so I don't have to continue to take it home on my kitchen table. And I was granted that. What they did was they purchased a forty-foot Conex box, which is down at the high school. And I just built a closet inside of there and put all the drama club clothing in there and then turned this into a heated workshop for me and my team, so.
That was probably quite a load.
It was about five trailer loads full of clothing. I started it, I started building the closets on the twenty-seventh of September. And it took me Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday to complete that. Because I had to dismantle it to build it down there. And so, yeah, with the help, with the help of my girls, which none of us are carpenters, we've learned a lot. But we did, did finally, and it's working out great. We've got a great little area in there now for us to work and warm up and take care of what needs taking care of.
How much was your, how much was your grant for?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. If I could, it's just another example of our people thinking outside the box. They see, they see something that needs to be done, they look at the resources they have, and they get it done. I invite you to go up and look at the Conex box and the racks that she built. And I'm telling you, the clothes look a lot better in the Conex box than they looked in that, that room, all crunched up together. And Mrs. Price, about six hundred pieces, I think, give or take. All right, last but not least, Mr. Hennessy.
I'll try and keep it simple so that four people, three people will see. But we've been working on the internet infrastructure. We've removed old hardware. We have fiber optics coming in, fiber optics going to all the buildings. There was a piece of old hardware that was basically throttling our internet connection. So there was high speed coming in, the old hardware was unable to handle it. So it was letting out slower speeds than coming in. We removed that, improved internet speeds. There's still some latency in the network. Latency is basically the time it takes data to travel from one piece of equipment to another. Pieces of equipment that are causing the issue are basically the switches. If you think of a switch like an airport terminal, everything gets throttled into the terminal and it gets sent off to different places. It's basically what the switch does. The internet comes in and then it sends it off to places where it needs to go. Some of the cabling in that is a little old school. The cable isn't capable of carrying the speed and the power that we need to move it through. I'm about ninety percent of the way through changing out those cables. Probably changing the other ten percent tomorrow evening and then we should see another spike in internet speeds and stability. Another project that's complete is the placement of the Juniper APs access points. They have what is referred to as AI. It's not obviously true AI, otherwise we'd have a total nightmare situation. It allows them all to talk to each other, so they talk and listen. So they basically manage the network themselves. So if you've got two hundred students connected to an AP over here and that AP is starting to struggle, it will talk to the nearest AP and pass off connections from that AP to another AP. Basically allows for smoother usage of the internet. And then the other thing that we mentioned earlier was the soft phone app for cell phones in the event that we lose our voice over IP network. Obviously, voice over IP needs two things, an internet connection and power. If we lose either of those, then we lose our entire telephony network internally. Whereas that soft phone app can allow us to contact, especially in crisis or an incident like a power outage, to contact parents and stuff. Any questions?
I did not realize you had an accent.
I know.
I don't.
So you'll, you'll remember last year, all the talk about E-Ray, E-Ray, E-Ray. This is, this is what we received because of all that. So it's finally coming to fruition, all the hard work that was done last year to prepare for what Mr. Hennessy is putting in his place. So if you have any more questions for the directors, I'm going to send them.
I, I just want to say one thing to, to all the admin and directors. I, I think there's a lot of times that our kids don't recognize what you do for them. And I, I think it's awesome when we can recognize janitors and administrators and teachers and, and directors. And we, we actually did that at a volleyball game a couple of weeks ago when we recognized Nacho that is there at every volleyball game. And the kids recognize him. And for those of you that weren't there, but that, that you're in front of the kids, they recognize that. And I just want to thank you for, for all the hard work that gets done at, at every level. And, and the kids really do appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that they recognize, they, they went out and took a picture with Nacho. And, and Hannity gave him a copy of that picture so that he could have it with the volleyball team. And it was just, it was really cool. It, it's really fun to watch. The kids recognize the hard work that goes into helping them progress in, in all that they do. So thank you for all that you do. And I'm just going to add, because it's, it's fun for Mr. Doolan, thank you for all you do, but especially all that you think you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It took you three months to figure the last part out.
It took you three months to figure the last part out, though. What am I supposed to say?
Did you get a chance to see what Nacho did after he got his thing? He went to go walk off and instead he found like John Lumberg on the side. And he went over and showed us the picture.
Oh, really?
He was so happy to hear that. I was like, that is awesome. That's awesome. Good partners.
Yeah, fantastic. And I know it's coach-led, but those girls totally participated in that. They enjoyed it with themselves. All right. Moving on to, I, because I was so early in the meeting, um, did we receive any notices?
I thought she, I thought someone put something up there, but I don't know if it's on the agenda, so I don't know.
Nothing that I have.
Wasn't it your wife?
Oh, she went home.
Oh, she's not going to present?
Awesome. WEA, it's your turn.
Okay. Sorry, I've been back here talking up this far. I'm like, Mr. Davies, three weeks gone. We got this. So last time I presented, I was like, in a, I had monsters with me and it was a mess, but.
They were cute monsters.
Oh, thank you. Well, hope this one's just as cute. Um, so I just wanted to tell you a little bit, I'll break it quick, about my why I chose to volunteer for this position. So not only were our former presidents ready to move on, but I attended delegates' assembly, um, for the IEA last year. And I just really wanted to make, I just really wanted to get more involved in our local chapter. And really, my goal is like co-president, is to like work with admin and you guys, the board, to help increase communication and understanding between like our policies and why things are the way they are. Like, I'm new in this, so you might have even already answered some of these questions for our other presidents, but, um, I know there's quite a few new board members as well, so. And honestly, even if there's no solution to a problem that I may present, it's still really nice to be heard and like that our problems are considered valid. That might even be the solution, is like, hey, hear me. And so that's a little bit about my why. And on that note, um, so we had a training on Friday on how to handle, um, students in crisis, presented by Mrs. Halverson, which was a great refresher, um, of some of our previous trainings we had last year. I think it was the Healing Children, who came last year. Um, and that could just piggybacked off of what they had presented last year, which was great. Now we're hoping that many of our teachers are really eager to move forward to have some like open and honest discussions about how to implement some of those strategies that we've been talking about for the last couple, sorry, the last couple of years. Um, and how, and with, with the available resources that we have at each school. Because we see, um, students' behavior escalating and de-escalating, and it's really important as a classroom teacher and as a school with our paras to know if this, then this type of situations. So we just really are looking forward to have more of those conversations, um, um, to come. And I think that's really all I got. We, as a third, as a pioneer, at Pioneer School, we also, um, we're really sad that Trevor is, we heard he's going to be going to a different school, but he's been great at Pioneer. He's our janitor in the third and second grade wing, and we love him. Like, I just in passing mentioned, hey, since the power outage, my clock's been two hours off and I can't get the thing to work. I think it's broken. And like not even five minutes later, he had a new clock for me. So just really appreciate, like you were saying, the support staff and, because it's not just what the teachers say or whatever, or what admins say. It really takes all of us to do what we do, so thank you. That's it. Oh, do you guys have any questions? Sorry.
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right, let's move into our consent agenda. Does everybody have an opportunity to look at the minutes from our last meeting? Any questions, anything that needs to be updated? Okay? And I don't know of any changes to this agenda.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, if I could. Golf, G, sorry, G, G will strike for tonight.
Okay? You'd probably have to remember when I hit the G.
Yes, sir.
Or H, you might have remembered H. And I think, I think when we were talking about our agenda earlier, um, retirements, resignations, and hiring were, were good at this time.
Yes, sir.
None of those. So, um, Ms. Dickerson, Kyla, if you would give us any information.
I'd defer to Barb. She's going to give you a financial report.
I'll remember to say that because you tell me that every time.
I was going to say, she's, she's been rocking that world.
Yeah, you have your financial report in your packets, and the most exciting thing about the financial report is there's absolutely nothing exciting about it. There's nothing I like better than everything just ticking along like it's supposed to. You, um, one thing I did want to bring to your attention is that you will see, if you compare this September report to the August report, you'll see dramatic differences in the year-to-date totals. We talked about this a little bit last year, that I wanted to, our fiscal year end is June thirtieth. Our teacher contracts and our para-payment schedules go through August thirty-first. So the July and August payrolls are actually the last payrolls of the prior fiscal year. So in June, for the audit, we run accounting entries in order to put those into the proper fiscal year. And historically, we have waited until the next audit cycle to reverse those accrued amounts. Because salaries have increased so much and benefits have increased so much, oh, it's between year to year, we really don't have a true picture of what our monthly expenditures are as a year-to-date total when we don't take out last year's information. So we should spend on the salary line items eight percent each month. So September's total for year-to-date is eight percent. So you'll see that, so if you looked at last month, you would have seen that they were at sixteen percent. We add another month and now you're back to eight percent, that's why. We've reversed those accrued entries, and now we're presenting a cash basis accounting, um, presentation that is based on actuals for this fiscal year. So that's the biggest change that you'll see. You'll see down at the bottom, that we, um, our checking accounts are imbalanced. We have some benefit changes that occur in the month of September, and that always causes a little bit of a mismatch between what we pay our vendor and what is actually coming through the bank because of electronic payments. And so that will all clear up next month. So the little bit of outage that you see right there will be cleared up next month, so. But I, I have no surprises for you at this time, which is the best report I can give you. Um, we are in the process right now of submitting, uh, tomorrow, the September thirtieth snapshot in time is due to the state. Um, this is the first leg of the stool that identifies, um, what will be ninety percent of our funding for the year. We have two trigger points in the fall. September thirtieth is that snapshot of who is teaching our children. So this is where we've talked about, you know, what is their education? How many years of experience do they have? Where do they fall on the career ladder? Because that's the amount of, uh, funds that are generated from them. And then, no, that first Friday in November will be that third leg of the stool of how many students we are teaching on an average daily attendance basis. And so those two pieces represent ninety percent of the funding that we receive from the state. So that first piece is due tomorrow, and then the next piece will be due November fifteenth. Melanie, I think you had a question for me.
I was just curious on the books of periodicals.
And that is. Okay, and we talked about this a little bit in June, uh, when we, when we did the audit. And we had it scheduled to purchase the new curriculum in June. And so we carried over a larger fund balance in July because I was able to get a fifty thousand dollar grant if I waited until July one to pay that bill. So it didn't seem like it made any sense to me to pay it on June thirtieth and lose fifty thousand dollars. And so I waited until July to have that bill paid, so we received that fifty thousand dollar grant. So when we amend the budget after we see what this first ninety percent funding mechanism does for us, we'll revise the budget and we'll clean that up at that point in time because our fund balance actually carried over larger than we anticipated because it was the amount of what we were going to spend on that Eureka Math. No, no, thank you for your money. It is a big red thing that jumps off the page and everybody is like, a hundred seventy thousand dollars over budget? What are you talking about? Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
You always cut me short.
I, well, I was so excited. We, we've been working on getting, and thankfully, we finally got it done where it prints the signatures on the check. So all Mel has to do is just initial the bottom of the check to say, oh, yeah, I reviewed that. So she doesn't have to sign it. And there's eighty-five checks in there. I'll tell you, there's a lot, so it would have been a lot of stamping. We'd had that, we'd had that with our K-Rol side, and it just wasn't working in the, in the budget side, but now it is, so. And I guess I could.
Just have it be the third step.
Yeah, yeah. And I could tell you, just a small little snippet. We, we did have some problems with a, a check that was, interestingly enough, it was signed by, um, Melanie and, um, and Riley, and it was sent to a company in Las Vegas. Well, somebody hijacked that check, wrote it with their name and, and amount, and came through, and we caught it that it was, um, fraud. But it did get cashed in the bank, so we were liable for that. We turned it into the fraud department, but it did freeze our account. So, um, the, the school, the budget side got frozen. And so it's, it's, um, we're, we're navigating that, we're navigating that, and it's going to work out. And it's just, um, it just is, those things are very upsetting. I don't know if you've ever had that personally, but that's what's happened in our world for right now. So we're working on it.
Any, any, we obviously have to approve and pay the bills. Was there any, anything new about the bills that we need to know about? Okay. Having gotten to the end of our consent agenda.
I will add, sorry, I mean, it's not really a question, but it's just an observation more than anything. As I look over these expenses, um, quite a few things from the Lower Foundation. It's pretty cool that we've been able to get quite a few of those grants.
They've been, they've been amazing. And I, the one, the other Lower Foundation grant that they received and, and maybe went to your, or, well, actually, it went to all our schools. They got a grant to purchase, uh, Spanish books, books written in Spanish for our kids. So all, three schools got eight hundred and some dollars from the Lower Foundation to do that purchasing. So it's a great, great thing. And, um, and, um, Dolores at the middle school was already telling me that she's got kids that are checking out books and, and loving it, so pretty cool. Thankfully, the Lower Foundation is with us.
Fantastic. So in order for us to move on to the next part of our agenda, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then let us move on to our action items. You know, it seems like we talk about buses a lot, but this time we're talking about actual, not a bus, but routes.
Bus trips, yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's an annual request just, uh, that you, you sign off on, uh, for, uh, the year's worth of field trips, basically, for, for the district.
There, it was, so, yeah, you, we can look through that.
There was a major change.
I don't believe there's any additions as of, from last year.
Just the same as last year.
What was the, um, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes in this? It shows zero buses, but then it says Lumberg would drive the bus. Does that need to have a bus?
So, yeah, they take a bus. So it should say they need a bus.
But it's not, it's not costing the school district because the bus driver is going to be, and it is a, an organization of the school. So, but I will tell you this, if you guys want to talk about it, that that ban is getting used by different organizations, and it's, it's helping out a little bit, I think, with the bu, the bus driver shortage.
They also did not go to this.
Well, that's, I was like, maybe this is another one.
Maybe it is, I don't know. Is there another FCA event outside the one they just did Sunday?
I have no idea. So, um, so the transportation stuff is submitted to Casey, so I don't know exactly what you're looking at. But, um, I would say it's very similar, um, to last year. And what we tell them, uh, our staff, is that if there's a possibility of going, put it on the list, it's easier to take it off than it is to add it.
I'll make a motion now we approve the, uh, high school bus transportation request for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
One second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded twice to approve this transportation request, request. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It just, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please.
Uh, the back door of the van is, is scheduled to be fixed in a couple of weeks.
And it came in a lot less than we.
For those of you, those of you that didn't know, our van was in a minor incident during the parade. And the back door got shattered.
One of the many fun things.
This is why you make the cross-country team run.
Oh, gosh. Mr. Doolin, we have some policies.
Yes, sir.
Thirteen oh-three and thirteen thirteen, anything that you can tell us how.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first one, it's kind of ironic, but it's the, it's the policy that tells us the annual policies to approve. So it behooves us to approve this policy so we can approve the other ones.
It's safe to actually require us to have that in there.
And I was floored when I went to look for it and it wasn't there, and I went, well, good grief. So then the other one, the thirteen thirteen, is just a conflicting. So if you guys are, um, updating, then the update, most update is going to be the one that they accept. So those are both pretty easy. But we do have to then get a schedule of how we're going to review those thirteen oh-three policies because there's about twenty of them. But they're, they do just need to be looked at each year.
Yeah, but that's easy once this is approved to.
Yeah.
Schedule those and look at.
Yes.
Two or three of them every fourth year. Or do it faster so it's done, however, we can talk about that later. Did anybody have any questions or concerns, comments about those two policies? Do we need to try to adopt them again tonight, or is this, this is going to be, first, a second reading?
You should. This is going to be just an adoption. It's just going to be the power move, I guess.
Issues with that. Okay?
I would move that we adopt policy thirteen oh-three and policy thirteen thirteen to our policy manuals.
Okay. Motion to, uh, adopt these two policies, thirteen oh-three and thirteen thirteen has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay? We're going to count it as everyone, remember you were made. Okay, uh, we have another policy thirteen eighty-five. Mr. Doolin, would you tell us about that a little bit?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is just some verbiage change in reference to, uh, the superintendent serves as. We want to change that to the superintendent appoints the, uh, Weasor School District's Title Line Coordinator. the superintendent appoints the Weezer School District's Title Line Coordinator and the Deputy Coordinator who oversees the implementation of this policy. So having, just treating another, a layer in case it comes to me, that I don't have any, already some self biases or biases built up, just sit on the stage.
So it's already a policy that we have in place and we're just changing.
Just some verbiage.
For a few verbal items. Any questions? Concerns that Mr. Doolan thinks he doesn't have time? Okay. Can I look at your motion on that particular policy?
I move that we update policy 3085 as stated.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to adopt 3085 is as written for us and been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome. Okay, was, you know, Kyla?
Thank you.
All right. Fiscal year 25, Edgar manual.
Yes, sir, and I, you know, you don't, I didn't, I didn't print that. It's pretty big. It's, it's the Education Department, General Administration, Administrative Regulations. Talks about procurement, talks about bookkeeping items. It talks about grants, monies, things of that nature. It's just an annual, it's an annual, annual, just like the, just like the other one, right? And it's kind of just annual approval?
It's a, it's a federal requirement that we have this and it's a requirement that we have to have it approved every year. We didn't make any changes to it, but it's to say that you understand that we have it and that it's approved for this year. And we should probably do it maybe in August, in years to come. Because we've already been going along and we've been using the Edgar manual for what we, we do. But we kind of mirror it. Am I getting that right for, oh, yes.
So, so where we, well, I guess we're adopting it for fiscal year 25. And I was going to say, where we do it annually.
Yeah, you have to do it annually.
But I mean, is it, so you're saying we should do it in August so that it's beginning of the school year versus.
Exactly.
It's a school, a school year, they do not just a.
Just a follow-up question. This is the exact same as written last year, so I don't have to read it verbatim this, this year?
Well, you may want to, though, sir.
You may want to.
I started to, I was like, oh my gosh, this is so long.
Light reading, yes.
Very light reading.
Yes, and writing it was even, even more fun. Because I will tell you. We came, we became a kind of the, people called us for our copies so that they could just pick out the Weezer School District and their school districts.
Really? Why read it?
I know, I agree, I agree. I wish I'd have went out there. It's, it's good, it's good. And actually, it's, it's, it makes you think. When you read it, you go, oh yeah, that, that's not, not allowable. And we need to do things, you know? And when they do a federal audit, they come in and they look at your, and you make sure you're following it. So, yes.
Okay, in order to move on, everybody make your motion.
I move that we approve the Edgar manual for fiscal year 25.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the Edgar manual for FY '25. All those in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous, Kyla.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Another, another approval needed. The gifted and talented program.
This is new.
Has a three-year plan. This is a new plan for us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Prior to COVID, we had a program, pretty good, a good program. And then COVID came and it kind of, kind of went by the wayside and a lot of things became more, more important, if you will. And now Auntie's gone back and resubmitted it to the states, a three-year, it's a three-year plan. Go ahead, Miss Stacey.
I was going to say, well, I will submit it after this evening, once you have an opportunity to approve the plan.
That's what I said.
Exactly, I was just reiterating what you said. Yeah, so the template for the gifted and talented planning has changed since COVID. So this is the new template and a lot of the new plan is focused on, like all plans and all federal programs, doing some reflection on how things have been going. But a big shift to looking at curriculum and how we're looking to adopt or consider our students who might be gifted and talented when we're looking at curricular adoptions or just things that we're using as additional pieces of learning for our students. How we're making sure that we're engaging kids who need to be learning at higher levels. So this three-year plan is really focused on just rebuilding that foundation that we haven't, we haven't had a gifted and talented district level committee. We did have a very active committee prior to COVID. So it'll be about reestablishing that committee, a little bit of an update to our protocol. Just in that, we're looking at students who are scoring high in the upper quartile, that they're, you know, in that 98th percentile as part of the academic or intellectual piece for kids who might be identified as gifted. But the referral process is open to anybody to refer, so that's included in the plan. Parents, community members, teachers can refer their kids to be considered, just like we do on the special education end of things. We refer kids to an evaluation committee. We look and determine whether or not evaluation makes sense right now. If not, we go back to the team and explain why not. If it is, then we move forward with getting consent and working through the evaluation process. So it's a very basic plan in the new template with the goal of just getting started again and getting back into the process of referring kids and evaluating, determining whether or not they're eligible for that service and then moving forward with how we align curriculum and activities to support those students. So it is very basic right now, but that's where you need to start, right? Basic foundation is pretty good. Any questions that you might have for me specifically about that plan?
So on the page four, under the administration, your name is listed. Does that mean you will be heading up this?
So presently, the answer is yes. However, I think there might be some shared partnership with our Academic Achievement Officer because the focus is turning to more curricular pieces. That probably makes more sense with what Mrs. Clark is doing versus where I am in special education right now. But that is, that'll be kind of a transition time and space for us this year. So we'll work collaboratively on that. I'm still available to do the screenings and the evaluations. Being a building administrator is a very busy job. So we'll, we'll work together on, on doing that. Yeah. At any building. It's not a busy job, ever, so. Any other questions you might have? I thought you were going to tell me I had a typo on page four. So this is just for three years, then in three years it comes back. Yes. So every three years, we're expected to update our plan and submit a new three-year plan to the State Department. It can be updated more frequently than that, but that's kind of the maximum timeframe that we should be going before we update the plan. So if you see things over the course of one year, you can go in. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you for your, thanks for your work in that. Appreciate it.
I had some good help, so. Yeah, it looks like a good team that you've been together. Yeah. Especially since it was over the summer, so. That's how we know communication is very nice.
I would make a motion that we accept the gifted and talented program three-year plan as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made to accept the gifted and talented program. It's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Few minutes. All right. More, more discussion about the emergency closure that we had.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Anytime that we alter our calendar of the hours that we submitted to the state at the beginning of the year, we have to get it approved. And I think you will do a C in there. Just kind of load it up for you for the high school and the middle school, the hours that we left school.
And you just need to sign, you have to prove it and then sign off on it so that we can submit.
Where does he sign it, though?
I think it's down at the bottom.
The sign line?
No, just the minutes.
Just the minutes. I guess just the minutes. I'm not sure how to sign that.
We can sign it anywhere.
But you do have to motion it.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the emergency closure on September 19th for the power outage.
Yes, that works. Motion's been made seconded to approve the emergency closure on the 19th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It was unanimous.
Skip G.
Go right to H.
Go right to discussion.
Does anybody have any future items that you would like to have on your agenda?
Legal for me to discuss a past item?
We can put it on the discussion items.
It was just my update from Region Eight meeting that I went to. Do you want any of that recap?
That would be in communication, that would be great.
Can I say that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We will, yeah, so let's get through this agenda and then we'll, in communication, we will talk about that. I appreciate that. And we do want to get to that. No, no future agenda items?
I don't know. I don't know if it's a bridge of that, I don't remember.
To make a 90-day.
But I just had some teachers approach me about a change in the staff dress code policy concerns.
That's, that's a good future agenda item.
Dress code policy?
Yeah.
For employee.
For staff.
And can I make a request for a policy to look at a policy? And I'm going to give you the policy number, 5400 on leave of absence. I have a suggestion for a change on that policy. I mean, we haven't, I don't know that we've got this quite in there yet, but I, I would like to amend it before I even goes to you. So there you go, 5400. Leave of absence, right?
Okay.
Leave of absence. And it's a policy change that I will probably resent.
Things on the next meeting. Any others that?
I know my wife's going to want to talk about possible conversation about curriculum items in the high school. I don't know if that's something that she, I'm going to put on the agenda item. She wants to talk about it just from a community standpoint. So I don't know if it needs to be necessarily an agenda as much as.
It does have to be on the agenda for community conversations as per our policy. We can have that up there.
What was it?
Curriculum. That, we can be more specific, English curriculum. Look at the old curriculum, however, we can narrow it down to just a specific one.
Anything else? What we're really trying to do is make our next meeting longer.
I tried to make this one as long as possible by asking that kind of question.
Okay, let's, let's talk about, let's read the communication that Mr. Doolan has. And then we will let Ms. Price just continue on speaking with, with the meeting she went to and share why she went for it. Appreciate it.
I have a letter from the Weezer Education Foundation. Dear Board, the Weezer Education Foundation wishes to thank you for the recent memorial in memory of Carolyn Fisher. The funds donated will be used to assist the students in the Weezer School District. Thank you for your thoughtful performance, Cindy Campbell. Weezer Education Foundation Board Member. And then, yes, last month I went to the Region Eight meeting. It was, it was good. We had three, three people from the ISBA when they were to present to us. Couple of the things that they talked about are the early bird sessions at our convention are reimbursable. So they recommend going to those. They were, and I had mentioned this to Kyla, they are looking for student entertainment groups. I remember last year the Cleveland Jazz Band played for us, so maybe we could get our amazing band to participate. I don't know. And then the main conversation topic that they had with all of us was seeking common ground and in community, having a shared vision. They gave us all a copy of this book. I haven't read it yet, Mastering Community. Once I read it, I'll let you guys borrow it. Anyway, with Mastering Community, they, or Mastering, yeah, Mastering Community. But Seeking Common Ground, they talked about the importance of shared vision, being united in purpose, communication, respect, and commitment. And then the last thing that they did is they gave us all a copy of the 2025 ISBA resolutions that have been drawn up by different school boards around the state and whether or not the state ISBA board, you know, likes them or not.
Supports them.
Yeah, supports or not. And so as, we were all in kind of small groups and they went around and kind of, we were able to discuss which ones were important. So I don't know if any of you have gone over any of those or not, but I know at the ISBA meeting, we will vote on that at the business meeting where we're at with those. So they are on the state, the website for you to look up. Otherwise, I do have copies of all of them. And, yeah.
I think.
Kind of our main thing.
I, I appreciate that and I think we have one more school board meeting before.
No, we don't. It's right after.
Do not. That's right, I was going, I'm going to talk next about the.
Yeah.
So, so we have reservations. I, I think I forwarded reservations to all of you where we are staying. And I have, Mr. Walker is not able to join us, I'm so sorry. But the, the meeting, the, first, first general session starts at noon. And there is lunch that is served at that time. And so if you are planning on going, I, I would suggest going to all of it. I mean, those that have attended, you get a lot of things that, but if, if you get there right at noon, you will have to go right into that. So you might want to get a little earlier because you go to a registration desk and pick up your bag and they give you, they will give you a packet with all of the resolutions on it and a lot of information. And then we, we can check into our hotel probably about 3:00, which is about a block away. But I think we can park there at that hotel before we, to go to the meeting. I don't think we need to pay for parking there. But if you do have any expenses like that, just keep track of, just keep your receipt because the school district will pay for it. And please call me if you have any questions. I've got a room for each of you. And then Mr. Doolan wanted to maybe get together for a Wednesday evening dinner. And, but I would suggest the scholarship auction is on Thursday evening, is that right? And the scholarship auction last year, Mel and I went and that was really, really fun. It was kind of a fun thing.
I didn't buy anything, but I made a donation at the end. Because I got, I got outbid on everything around it.
I know, I know. And, yeah, I did too. They have a silent auction and then they have a live auctioneer kind of thing.
How do we, if, if we want to contribute something to.
Oh, we've got that, we've got that going on.
But like, can I bring something?
Would you like to? Because Michelle, Mr. Doolan loves to make baskets. So I've given her a budget and I had her put some Weezer things in there. But if you want to contribute into that basket, just, that would be wonderful. We would love it. We want to be one of the large items.
My daughter was the recipient of a scholarship for that, and it's very cool.
That, I mean, it is, they really celebrate. And I'll tell you what, we are Region Eight. It's kind of weird because you would think of yourself as Region Three, but we're Region Eight and it's been a dry spell for the Region Eight people. So if your granddaughter or your, are one of your children, so it can go down to your grandkids, can apply for this scholarship. If you've served on a school board, you, they are able to get, get money for a scholarship. And the money that's raised is through this auction that we have, so.
And that's Thursday night?
That's on Thursday night. The auction's kind of fun. It's, it really is. It's kind of fun, yeah. And, and lastly, unless, we, I'm going to send out some emails about this so that you guys have all the information, okay? So it'll be great. But I, I do need to make one small thing at the end here. We had one of our long-term, long, long, long employees pass away and had a celebration of life for her the other day. And honestly, truthfully, I must be, I must be living as a mushroom. And honestly, truthfully, I must be in, I must be living as a mushroom. I didn't even know about it. But Charlotte Harada served our school district for a lot of years and was just a wonderful person, um, just a wonderful community person, um, did so many great things and always had a smile and her sense of humor. I can, I, there are stories I can tell you all over about Charlotte. It's, um, funny. But anyways, I just want us to note as a board to, to say that we lost a really good person for our, for our community. This, I, I, I just still feel really bad about it, but anyways, it's, um, I just wanted it noted.
Thank you. She thought my dad had to oriental cooking.
She did. Well, she hired, I can remember, oh, God, I, I can tell you a story. I'm not going to, because they're all funny.
He taught, wait, wait, wait. She taught, but was he a good student? Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Anyways, that, that's it. Okay. Sorry.
So you'll email us?
I'm going to email you all the stuff. I've got, I've got the agenda and everything and I can just attach that and give that to you as well. So, okay. And if you want a carpool, I mean, Barb and I are driving down together, but you're welcome to come with us. Uh, we, we can drive, so we're, if you don't want to take a car, we are, um, on, on Friday, on, yeah, on Friday, on the third day, there's a session for you guys, a general session, because you guys get to vote, but then there's a clerk session on the other side. But, but we'll be there. We'll be there.
The middle school will be there.
Oh, the middle school is going to, yeah, so Weezer Middle School is going to have a publication there. They, I, I sent it out right away and they're looking for people to display and Courtney Thompson said, I'm doing it. And I said, okay, go for it.
So if you have ideas for them, because they're going to be in a confined space and she has the entire group, so she's trying to think of things for, you know, the kids to kind of do around and about, so.
I think she should have some cards that to pass out to these people and say, here, we're the Weezer School District. This is why your kids should be going.
Don't you wish you lived here?
Don't you wish you lived here?
That's awesome. But there's only one more motion that we need to be named.
Why are you coughing?
Because she was excited about it.
I'd like to make a motion. I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.